Good evening and welcome to the Village of Westmont Committee, the whole meeting for October 1st, 2009. First thing I'd like to do in opening our meeting is have the clerk take the roll call, please.
Mayor Ron.
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Forsley.
Here.
Trustee Klebanell.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Searle is absent tonight. Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
And for the last time, I'm saying this, Acting Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Fire Chief Trout.
Here.
Human Resource Administrator Casey, I saw her walk in, but she hasn't come into the room yet.
Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item of the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting held September 17th and board meeting held September 21st, 2009. Any changes to be reported to the court?
There are two corrections in here. One was Trustee Klebanell's vote on the second purchase order was a negative and that did not get recorded and in the voting summary, it was wrong too. So those have both been reported, so.
Okay.
That's all. Thanks.
Open forum. We have four requests before us this evening under open forum. Two of them are from the same gentleman, that being Joe Sacco from 501 North Park Street. So I'd like to begin with having Joe come up to the podium. Please, sir.
This works?
He'll turn it on if you put something on there.
Again, thank you for permitting me to address you this evening. The first topic that I would like to bring up is that I want to express my sincere gratitude for everyone that contributed to the huge success of the Frank Trout Appreciation Night. We had just under 200 people who attended this event to thank Frank for all that he's contributed in the past 40 years of service to our community. It was spectacular. And there would have even been more there, except this was held during the height of family vacations and we had many, many calls that expressed their concern that they wanted to be there, but they had their family scheduled vacations. And one of those happened to be our mayor. He was unable to attend because he had his family vacation scheduled there. But anyway, it was a huge success and I wanted to express our sincere gratitude for that. First of all, I want to thank all of those out there that are watching in TV land and those here who contributed monetarily so that this would be a successful event and help offset the costs. And I would be very remiss if I didn't acknowledge all of those businesses who contributed at no cost, the food and their time and an efforts to make this a success. So that I don't miss anyone, I'll not look at you too closely and I'll read off of my list and make the acknowledgements. First, there was the absolutely delicious and John Fleming who contributed his very famous Cuban steak sandwiches. And those of you who have tried it know just how good they were. And they were very good that night. And next was the Brickyard Grill, the former grape restaurant. And they, in the early goings, provided a huge pan of buffalo chicken wings. And they went quite rapidly and were just an excellent, excellent dish. And next on the list, and these are all in alphabetical order, is Divine Wine. Now, we held this event on a Saturday night and that's probably Jim and Denise Walsh's, one of their two most lucrative nights from a business standpoint. And they contributed their premise at no cost to us. They also provided a platter of cheese, various cheeses and grapes, which were excellent. I tried, you can look at my weight, I sampled everything. In addition to that, that kept our expenses way down, they give us just a fantastic price on the wine that we purchased to provide, wine, beer and soda that we purchased to provide, each and every individual came in with a beverage. So to them, I extend our sincere gratitude as well, because without that, we would have been in serious trouble financially. And in the same building, there's Diane and Bob who own La Petite Suite and they provided desserts for the entire evening. And if you tasted them, you just know how delicious they were. And then there's a little place down south here at 63rd and Cass called Nick's Pizza and that's owned by Jasper Marino. And he provided the pizza throughout the evening for this event. So many kudos to Jasper Marino. He came the distance and delivered them and made certain that they were hot on arrival. And then we also have to extend a great deal of thanks to Mark Link at Uncle Bubbs. And I'm certain everyone here and many people out there knows what his pulled pork sandwiches were like that he provided for us. And this goes on and on. And last on this list of businesses is Vince Satori and Bob Erdoo. And he provided the appetizers, the stuffed mushrooms that we had. Again, the food was just fabulous that we had. And from a financial standpoint, the Knights of Columbus helped us tremendously with the financial contribution. And so I extend our thanks again to that organization. You know, in our town, we're very fortunate that we have a number of these business places that are so willing to help. And the next time you visit one of these establishments, you might go up there and seek out the owner and tell him how thankful you are that they're in this town conducting business and that you appreciate their contributions to our village. Couple other issues, and I'll try to be brief. I called Steve Watson and asked him if he would contribute his chili. I've had it many times before. And his chili is second to none, any place that you can buy chili in the area. And Steve contributed two large pots of that chili to our organization. And I have one other thing that I need to conclude with. And that's a special thanks to each and every one of you here who issued the proclamation declaring August 15th, 2009 is Frank Trout Appreciation Day. In conjunction with that, we were very fortunate to have a business place here in Westmont called The Framemakers. And Barbara, who owns that, provided the framing and the artwork associated with this and provided the plaque that was presented to Frank at this meeting. And our mayor hasn't seen the plaque because he was out of town. We just recently received the signed final copy of this. And Barbara didn't do this just once, she did it twice. She framed it the first time with the unofficial copy and we brought it back to her. She framed it again the second time, took it apart and put it back together. There's a real business person. And if you haven't been into her shop, you need to stop by. She's quite an artist. So with that, this is the signed proclamation. I'd like to bring it up here because I know you have.
Look at the officials.
The others that were there at the meeting have put this the presentation. And that Barbara's artwork, beautiful.
She, I recently had a picture framed by Barbara, Framemakers, and once again, excellent, excellent, very talented work. And we appreciate not only the work that you do, but your contribution to the community as a whole. Your opinions are well taken by all of us that sit up here and do represent, you do represent a very successful endeavor, business here in the village and we appreciate that. And I will circulate this around for everyone to take a look at.
Yeah.
There's a little, oops.
He'll focus.
There's a glare off of the picture, but most of the trustees were there and this was the presentation, the evening of the 25th, of the 15th. They're in the background and it isn't the best picture, but it's the only one we have of the presentation. So again, thank you very much on this issue. Do any of you have any questions or concerns that I can answer?
Thank you for doing it.
It was a great event.
Appreciate that.
It was a great event. Thank you.
Oh, you know what I did forget? Excuse me, my memory sometimes wonders. I need to thank two other participants who were in this, who co-chaired this with me. There was Nancy, Mary Ann Nygro from First Page Bank, who handled the financials and wrote the checks.
Okay.
And then Jim Addington, who provided some history and some interesting stories over the past many years in his association with Frank. That was the thing that I left out. Even with my notes, I forgot it. So thanks again, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joe. Next, we have Larry.
We have Joe again.
Oh, excuse me.
He gave it to me.
Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
There was another. Your next one, Joe.
He did.
There it is. I'm sorry.
Did you have two things?
He has two items.
Oh, yes. Do you want me to just?
Yeah, just go ahead and do the second one. Please.
This is quick. I view the intersection of Quincy and Cass Avenues as an extreme safety hazard because they're blocking the intersection on eastbound Quincy, I'm sorry, westbound Quincy from the northbound traffic. If you are at that intersection headed south and the intersection on Quincy is blocked, you cannot get to the Westmont Center or to the Ace Hardware. And once you stop, you're very close, you're only just a hundred yards south of the tracks, you back up traffic. And if a train happens to be coming, there's going to be cars that are stopped on that intersection. So what I'm proposing is that you post at that location a large do not block intersection. Because it's only a matter of a couple of cars that can turn in front of the southbound traffic to go north. And I live north of the tracks and I do a lot of my business there. And I would say 80% of the time when I come down to turn onto eastbound Quincy, it's blocked by traffic that stopped if traffic's not going. And what can happen there is I've come very close to being rear-ended by cars because I'm stopped and they're in a hurry to get across the tracks. There may be four or five cars behind me and they're all trying to come to a stop at the same time. So I think you need to look at that issue, post a sign and start issuing tickets for those that are in neglect of that sign and block the intersection. Thank you for all your time.
Very good. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Next, we have Larry Forsberg from the Westmont Chamber of Commerce. And before he begins, one of the other items I wanted to mention under Mayor's comments, which I will mention now, is many of us, most of us, all attended the celebration last evening at the Westmont Center, celebrating 35 years of existence of the Westmont Chamber of Commerce. And Larry did an excellent job of putting that all together. You had a record turnout of business individuals, many, some live in Westmont, some don't live in Westmont, some live as far away as Lamont or even further, but yet still belong to the Westmont Chamber. You've done a great job and it was great to see all those people come out and support 35 years of Chamber of Commerce here in the Village of Westmont. And I might add that we, as a village, support the Chamber and every year financially and myself, I've always supported that and think it's a very, very worthwhile support financially for the Chamber. And with that being said, thank you again for all that you do and.
Well, thank you, Mayor Ron.
Put together a terrific celebration and the food, mentioning, Joe Sacco mentioning food, the food was excellent also and it was all donated by various restaurants and food establishments in the village.
Thank you. It was a great event last night. We did have a record turnout. We had 122 people participate, you know, businesses, civic leaders, residents even. It was a wonderful turnout and I would be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that we have so many volunteers, restaurants and so forth that donated things to make that evening such a success. So a big thank you to all those. And in terms of 35 years of service to the community, we're very proud of that and we look forward to many more years.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight to talk about two events that are coming up in October, two very important events. The first is, the Chamber's pleased to announce that we're going to have the Westmont State of the Village Address on October 14th. This informative presentation features our very own Mayor, Bill Ron, and it's always an excellent presentation, so please don't miss it. This is going to be held at the New Guava Restaurant at 800 East Ogden Avenue. Their program will include lunch, the State of the Village Address and time for questions and answers. So check in at that event will be at 11:30 a.m. sharp and will be adjourning about 1:30. The fee for that luncheon event is $20. And by the way, those who have not been at the New Guava Restaurant, I highly encourage you to stop by there. It's a wonderful addition to our Westmont Restaurant Group. Secondly, the Westmont Pumpkin Harvest Festival, scheduled for October 23rd, 24th and 25th. This will be an action-packed weekend, offering a wide variety of family events. We're going to include a heated activity tent right here in front of Village Hall, a carnival, we're going to have a pumpkin decorating contest, a pumpkin pieing contest, live entertainment, costume contest and much, much more. So encourage all the families to come out and participate. Again, that'll be October 23rd, 24th and 25th. More information on both these events is available at westmontchamber.com or by calling the Chamber Headquarters at 630-960-5553. Thank you for your time. Look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from board members? Thank you, Larry. Next is Walter Gillette from 207 East Naperville.
My building has been owner and occupied by myself and my family since 1984. And it is a natural typical three unit. It was custom-built and with totally open halls and stairwells, windows on all landings and glass insert doors, et cetera. In 1984, Frank Chief, Fire Chief Frank Johannick approved my building, fire extinguishers and halls, and I added to the apartments, as well as they're still there now. The wall outlets were all used for emergency lightings, they're on every landing, front and rear. 14 smoke detectors throughout, carbon monoxide detectors, I also added to the units, being family occupied. And anything beyond that, Frank Johannick told me was for more units. For 25 years, my family occupied the building and has been safe. My building is not commercial and due to family occupied, nonprofit really. Now, after 25 years of passing various inspections, I'm told the rules have drastically changed and what worked and passed for 25 years is now unacceptable, causing an extreme disruption of my home and property and the burden of outrageous expense. The rules and codes should coincide with common sense, not strictly by the book. For instance, the exit signs I was forced to install are as so unnecessary as it would be if the board members were forced to put exit signs at the front and rear of their doors. That's how open my property is. The work, the mess, the expense of the signs, emergency lights, approximately $2,000 so far, has brought me before you because the continuation of installing fire panel, pole stations, heat sensors, and they want heat sensors now in the privacy of the home, horn strobe, smoke detectors, who knows what else, and to the expense of approximately $5,000 to $6,000 and counting. As a property owner of 34 years in Westmont, an owner and family occupied of 25 years in my three unit, I would appreciate two things from the village and the village board. Number one, answers as to why, after 25 years of maintaining of properties and in total safety, I am told it's by the book, do it, no grandfathering, no using some common sense when necessary. Second, if 25 years ago, Chief Frank Johannick gave me the time and courtesy to do a walk through my building and did what he did and approved what he did, Chief Frank Trout has been in my building, has been, he knows my property and he knows he's more than welcome to come back, come look at what I have now have concerns about and that's why I'm before you. I have been told and understand the terms, save lives, safety and protection, et cetera. We, as a family, have done all of the above and even more for the past 25 years. I thank you for hearing my concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you. On that, on that particular note, I think this is a big issue that's before, before the village board, before multiple housing owners in the Village of Westmont. And if I could call upon Fred Kimball, our Economic Development Director, and also acting as our Assistant Village Manager for Ron Searle this evening, to just give a little background on the change in codes, fire codes, as they relate to not only Mr. Gillette's situation, but the entire village as a whole.
Well, I think Mr. Gillette raises an interesting point, Your Honor. When we talk about building codes for things like electrical and plumbing, unless it's a life safety issue, while you're not required to bring your older building immediately up to code, unless you do major work on it, then you must upgrade the system. In the case of Mr. Gillette, and Chief Trout can correct me if I'm wrong, the question is, does Mr. Gillette need a fire alarm system in his building when it has multiple units? The code, the fire safety code clearly says that he does have to have that. And that is something that is not grandfathered and, you know, I leave it up to the village board as to whether or not we want to make any exceptions to that rule that might compromise the safety, because if we allow Mr. Gillette not to have a fire alarm system in his three unit building, then we would also be similarly required or obligated in some way to allow others to have an exception to that. I don't think it's something that we want to give exceptions to on a very frequent basis or very freely, because it does involve a very fundamental question of public safety in multi-union department buildings. And that is, should we have fire alarm systems in there for the protection of the residents? Granted, Mr. Gillette has some special circumstances, but we feel that the code is correct. Chief Trout, do you have anything that you wish to add in that regard? This is a question of a fire alarm. That's what this boils down to.
Any comments from board members?
Is this used as a single-family house or is this three units and two of the tenants pay rent even though they're relatives?
To my knowledge, it's a three-unit apartment building. In terms of its occupancy presently, I cannot verify that.
Can you answer that, sir?
What was the question, please?
Is this used as a family dwelling and with the other, with the other two tenants in the other two apartments do not pay any rent?
No, it's not that they don't pay rent, but they need my taxes, they need my mortgage payment, they need whatever little bit of maintenance I need. It's not, it's just not a great profit that I'm getting.
Do you claim it as a business on your taxes?
No, I don't.
So you claim it as a residence?
As a residence.
Well, the code doesn't differentiate by who your tenant is. It's based on what type of building you have and whether they're related to you or not, you have tenants. It's a, if it's a three unit, it's a three unit, I think, for purposes of enforcing the code.
Any other comments by trustees?
I'd just like to add, 25 years ago, when everyone had smoke alarms and it was a wonderful thing, and then out came carbon monoxide detectors and people were leery of them and said, why would I possibly need them? And many of us know people whose lives and their family's lives were saved by carbon monoxide detectors. Things evolve and they evolve for a reason and I'm of the opinion that in this instance, they're evolving in a good way. To put in fire alarms and heat sensors, if you have people that are sleeping either with just a ceiling or a floor between the units or a wall between them and the fire alarm or the smoke alarm goes off next door, those people are going to, you know, run for safety. And if somebody's a heavy sleeper and the fire department arrives and they have to then determine, you know, who do we go in and save? Is there anyone in the next unit? I think it's there for a reason. And when you have multiple family housing and you have not the benefit of side yards and outside walls, it's there for safety. So I, for one, as far as alarm systems in multifamilies, don't think there should be exceptions to it.
John, what happens if some, if one of the family members moves out and he rents it to someone else?
Doesn't matter who the.
I understand that, but we don't know if we make an exception that that's happened. So he could have two families living in there with a third family coming in that's totally unrelated. So where his, he's trying to say it's a family business or family dwelling and all of a sudden, there's somebody else that's in there and we don't know that that has changed if we decided to make that kind of a exception.
Any other comments? Thank you for coming, Mr. Gillette. Moving, moving right along. Open forum is completed. Reports, the mayor. I've already mentioned my congratulations to the Chamber of Commerce on 35 years of very successful operation. And the second thing I want to mention is that as, as, as we are speaking, the first meeting of the Citizens Finance Planning Committee is in session this evening, composed of residents and business individuals from across Westmont. And giving them, Lisa Van Bogdan, our Finance Director, is going over all the finances and the organization of the village. And as I have mentioned previously, we are looking forward to getting a report back from them with their comments as they look at all aspects of the village and its financial and other department operations, to see if there's, there's something that our staff or all of us as elected officials here may have, may have overlooked in terms of where we could change our service, improve the service, improve our service at a less cost to the residents and the business communities. All of those things will be looked at by this committee and they will be reporting back to us in, in about six months. And I'd just like to, for the record, mention their names. And they are Lynette Tuggle, Mike Porter, Justin Shide, Carrie Kamak, Stephen Nero, Anthony Julian and Mary Kay Caprally. We approve, we appreciate their volunteer willingness to volunteer for this committee. And as I had mentioned previously, there are other individuals that submitted resumes to be considered and we are looking for other ways to get these other individuals that were not connected or selected for this committee involved in serving the village in some other type of manner. And with that being said, just my thanks again for all of them and their willingness to volunteer. And the last thing I wanted to mention is a request for an executive session on personnel at the conclusion of this meeting. Thank you. Next, our village clerk.
I just have to bring up that we got a request from the Westmont Wild County Cheer Squad. I believe there's, your letter should be in your packet and all of that. So I would like to put that on the agenda for a vote Monday, since it will take place before we can vote on it again, so. And we will reinforce to them that the girls are not to be at the intersections. You know, they can be on the sidewalks, but only the adults can be in the street, so. Okay, that's all I needed to bring up tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Our village attorney, John Zemanek.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing tonight.
Our manager, acting village manager, Fred Kimball.
Yes, Your Honor, staff would request permission to add two additional POs for consideration on Monday evening's agenda. The first is Phillips Flowers for $5,606 for Holly Day's wreaths. And the second, with Mead Electric for some light pole replacement in the amount of $49,362, would like to ask Public Works Director May if he would make a quick comment. if he would make a quick comment of explanation on this particular matter.
Sure. Yeah, the, the timing is unusual because this is something, although it's considered maintenance, the, the replacement, we're talking about the replacement of the, just the mast arm traffic signals, and there's two at each traffic signal location at the three intersections in the downtown. They were all installed at the same time, and we recently had a, actually last Sunday night, one of them came down, and it is unclear, there is no physical evidence that it was struck by anything, so it could have just failed on its own, and they were all installed at the same time. So we have to do the replacement of that item, as well as inspection of the other locations, and be in the same age that they're, you know, worthy of being replaced at this time. We have to put the order in right away. They can get the one that was felled up quickly, but we need to place an order for the other five, so that we can replace the rest of them expediently. We do have a maintenance contract, and we have an open purchase order already that could absorb this cost, but given the size of the purchase for just one maintenance item, the manager felt it was best that we cut a separate PO identifying just that work.
How long ago were those put up?
Approximately nineteen eighty-five. And I was also told yesterday that we're not the first community experiencing this, you know, issue right now, and they're relating it to the, the painted fixtures. Every, every traffic signal, there was a trend to paint everything black, or ours were brown for a long time, sometimes green when you go far enough back. And the darker the pole, the more condensation that builds up inside of it, and then they physically deteriorate from the inside out, so you don't even see it, you know, on the, at the surface. So these will be galvanized and not black.
The other thing that I asked Steve May, our Public Works Director, to comment on this evening, was to give, give us an update on the Black Hawk Street reconstruction-
Yes.
-progress.
Black Hawk Drive and, and to the aggravation of everybody that lives on Black Hawk Drive really, really seems like it's dragging out long, and it, and it is taking a long time. But it, it seems more so because when you peel off all the pavement and you have to live in those rough conditions for a long time every day is, is a very long period of time. There has been progress all along, although it's much slower now, and all of the underground work has been completed on Black Hawk Drive, meaning the water main and the sewer improvements. And the last sewer, the water main was put into service, and the last of the individual water services for each home were just transferred over to the new main about a week and a half ago. Since that time, we've been waiting for, not waiting for, but what, perpetual coordination with the utilities that have to be relocated. So ComEd's been working out there pretty steadily, and there's a pretty significant amount of work that NICOR still has to complete for each individual gas service underneath the road, and all the existing ones are very shallow, so it's preventing us from moving forward as fast as we would like to. And the last issue was what to do with all the spoil coming off the property and the, the aggravation with the review process for, for disposing of what IDOT is now calling non-special waste is, I, I don't know any other way to put it other than, I don't want to use the word bureaucratic, but there's a very involved process of any change order in getting things done. So last week, we got, we met in Schaumburg with IDOT and have permission to use, use a temporary stockpile. I mean, take the material out, keep working, stock it somewhere else while you're waiting for the approval process for the method that you have to dispose of it. So what, you know, we're, we've solved that, and as soon as Monday, we're going to start excavating for the road, which was the last step. Everything's geared around towards, you know, determination to get a hard-surface pavement on there before snow, and we should be able to achieve that. I did have one other update, if, really quickly, is we got very good news about our stimulus package for the water main improvements on West Burlington Avenue and North Lincoln, and those are, for all practical purposes, approved at the application end. The only thing remaining is the actual signature from the director, and it's in Springfield, so in about a week, a week and a half, we'll have that in hand, and we're going out to bid soon for that, for that work, too.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Steve. Any questions, Board members? Thank you.
Thank you.
Fred, did you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Moving right along, trustees. I'll start with Trustee Fleming this evening.
Oh, nothing this evening. Thank you.
Trustee Klebino?
Once again, I just want to remind everybody, on Tuesday, October 6th, is the Fire Department Open House. The hours are six-thirty to eight-thirty. Hopefully, the weather's good. This is being done by a grant, so I appreciate it. And then that Friday, October 9th, will be the Silent Parade going down Chicago Ave. So please, I hope everybody gets out there and has a flashlight and honors the fire trucks and vehicles that are going down. It's for the people, the firemen and their people who were victims in the fire. And then I also want to make sure everybody realizes that there is the Moving Vietnam Wall in Downers Grove, four thousand Saratoga Ave, and it was there today, and it's going to be there only till the 5th. So if you haven't seen it, I saw it when it was in Lisle. It's really a nice thing to do, so if you can, try to get out there. It's open twenty-four hours a day, so find some time during now and the 5th and get out and see this beautiful Vietnam Wall. It's very nice, and I don't know when it'll be back in our area again. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Seneca.
Thank you. Just briefly, I wanted to caution our residents. I had sort of an unusual thing happen today. Doorbell rang. I answered the door. There was a man in a uniform, not a police officer, not a firefighter, very official-looking gentleman with a badge on and logo on his shirt that said Just Energy, and he proudly announced to me that he was required to look at my NICOR bill because perhaps I was paying too much. And I was a little reluctant, of course, so I, I asked him. I said, well, who's requiring you to do this? Is it the village? You know, who's requiring you to do this? And he said, well, I'm required. We're, we're right here in Westmont. We're over on Oakmont, and I'm required to check everyone's bill to see if you're paying too much. And I said, you know, I really need to see your, your permit, because, you know, I happen to know you have to have a permit to do this. Well, yeah, I'm sure it's back at the office. We have it. Well, again, I was very reluctant, so I quickly had Fred on the phone, and we were able to confirm that there is no such permit for this company called Just Energy. He assured me he was on his way to Village Hall to get the permit. I don't know if he ever came in or not, but clearly, this was a company that was trying to sell gas. It, it said they were providers of natural gas. So I'm sure they're, you know, while, while they're just trying to make a sale, they're going about it the entire, entirely wrong way. So just know, if somebody comes to your door, you don't have to show them your gas bill. And I would urge you just to, you know, call the police, call the village. If they can't provide a permit, then, you know, get on them about it. So I don't know how many other people they went to, but they were certainly in my neighborhood. So just a word of caution. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Scott?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Thank you. Trustee Forsley?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
And Trustee Emery?
I just want to mention that the Public Safety Committee will have a special Public Safety Committee meeting next Wednesday, October 7th. We'll be up at the police station at five hundred North Cass on the second floor in the training room. We're going to go through the proposed joint communication center, and I know that trustees and the chief and other people from Oakbrook have been invited and to tour this with us and that type of thing. And then we'll go over some things for the fire department as far as, like, the strategic plan for accreditation and that type of thing. So that's seven PM next Wednesday in the second floor training room.
Okay. Thank you. Moving right along, unfinished business. Downtown employee parking permits. Board to consider the creation of parking permits for downtown employees at a cost of twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars. Twenty-five, twenty-five dollars per quarter, and to identify designated parking areas where said permits are valid. A bad, bad attempt at humor. Sorry about that. Thank you. Fred, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor and trustees, because this next item is of such importance, staff appreciates the opportunity to make some general introductory comments that we think might set the stage for the item that's to be considered next on the agenda. Because the downtown B1 Central Business District is acknowledged to be the heart and soul of a community, the asset that helps define the community's identity, the Westmont Village Board over the years has made a number of significant investments in the downtown to substantiate that premise. Downtown investments are designed to promote pedestrian-friendly environment, to help attract patrons and customers to our businesses, to provide parking for customers, to promote special events, to provide information and support services, to provide marketing assistance, and to provide direct financial support to individual businesses to assist them with startup and improvement expenses. For example, the village over the years has provided brick pavers, benches, flower pots and baskets, ornamental street lighting, audio speakers, and lighted pedestrian crosswalks to enhance the pedestrian friendliness and safety of our downtown. These improvements are designed to attract customers to downtown businesses by making the area more inviting. In talking with Public Works Director May, we conservatively estimate the total cost of these improvements over the years and ongoing estimated to be in excess of one million sixty thousand dollars for all these physical improvements. The village improvements to the train depot and park and fountain area, in addition to that, also serve to make the downtown more attractive to commuters who have the potential to be developed as customers for our downtown businesses. A recent rental agreement between the village and the College of DuPage at very low, below-market rental rates for space in the Westmont Center to hold evening classes for their nursing programs and English as a second language will generate additional pedestrian activity in the downtown, which may benefit downtown businesses. Two major additional investments in the downtown include the dedication of village property for public parking for patrons and customers of downtown businesses. The village provides land, paving, and engineering monies for customers of downtown businesses to park conveniently near the businesses they frequent. These public lots includes the properties at Burlington and Cass, Irving and Cass, the Manning School Lot, and the small lot behind Haroldson's Garage. Now, this next point is very important. The village does not provide similar public customer parking for businesses on Ogden Avenue or on Sixty-third Street or East Chicago Avenue or any other business area within the village. Only in the downtown do we provide this public parking. In addition, the village recently commissioned a sixteen thousand dollar downtown parking study with Rich and Associates, a nationally-known consulting firm, to assess the parking needs of our downtown. Snow removal is another ongoing expense in support of the businesses in our downtown district. In no other part of the Westmont community does the village provide snow removal for the sidewalks in front of businesses. Nowhere else does the village scoop the snow, push it to the curb, and then physically pick up and haul away the snow at great manpower expense to be stored on public property. The annually-reoccurring cost for this special service is clearly in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. For marketing and promotion of downtown businesses, the village provides an annual sixty thousand dollar grant to the Westmont Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, a significant portion of which benefits the downtown Central Business District. Over and above this annual funding, for the past two years, the village has provided direct marketing grants for the Celebrate Downtown Westmont activity. Now, the village also provides direct financial assistance to downtown businesses through our downtown development grant program. This longstanding program has provided facade grants for over fifteen downtown businesses in the total amount in excess of seventy-five thousand dollars. This well-used program was recently expanded to include grant funding for mechanical and code compliance updates. Grant awards include, but are not limited to, the following businesses, and I have some photographs that we'd like to show tonight. So just to show you how things can get improved over the years, here's a picture of the property at twenty-nine and thirty-one North Cass from some downtown Westmont archives. And you can see it's a pretty stark building. And after the facade grant to Divine Wine at twenty-nine North Cass, look at the difference in the appearance of that building. And this was done partially with grant monies provided by the Village of Westmont to Jim and Denise Walsh for the benefit of improving that facade. Many people in the Westmont community can remember what the Knights of Columbus Hall looked like before the facade grant took place at twenty-five North Cass Avenue. And here's an example of what happened to that building after the facade grant helped the Knights of Columbus improve the appearance of their building. The Karma Salon and the Amber American Bar and Grill at fifteen North Cass, and I believe Amber Grill is thirteen North Cass, also benefited from downtown facade improvement grants through the Village of Westmont. Two very attractive buildings, two very successful businesses, which promote the health of our downtown community. Dr. Patrick Blaney was the benefit, was the recipient of a downtown improvement grant for his building, actually had some structural problems on the front of this building, and the five thousand dollar grant that he received was a partial assistance in the redevelopment of the front of his building. Dolce Cafe at fifteen West Quincy, and here's kind of a blast from the past. Here's what this building used to look like when it housed the Worth Plumbing business in the nineteen-sixties and the nineteen-seventies, I believe. And here's a picture of that building after a facade grant was provided to help with the awning, the gooseneck lighting, and some other very nice amenities to improve the appearance of that building. Recently, the Village Board approved a grant for a new successful business in our downtown, the Expression Dance Studio at twenty-one West Quincy. And here's a photograph illustrating the improvements that were made to the front of this building. Truly a tremendous improvement in three buildings in that particular area and the quality of our, our store stock there. And let's see, I think we've got John Fleming here tonight from Absolutely Delicious Restaurant. And here's what his building used to look like years ago before it was occupied by Absolutely Delicious. And after a facade grant and considerable investment and elbow grease by John, here's what the building looks like today. John, what's your address there? Is it eighteen North Cass? Additional facade improvement grants have gone to Verdi Hair Salon, now known as Flux, at two forty-five North Cass Avenue. And one of the ones of which I'm most proud, I think, that made a significant difference in a building here in Westmont, and I'll, I'll share you a little story with you about this. This is the building at thirty North Cass. And I think I, I don't think we can get sued for saying that there were two rather eccentric sisters who, who lived in this building. And when I first came to Westmont in December of two thousand and three, I remember visiting this building and going through it, and visiting the sisters who lived on the second floor of this building, and seeing one of the elderly sisters bundled up very tightly in a smock and a, and a winter coat and a chair. Because there was a six-foot wide circular hole in the ceiling, and the snow was just blowing in, and it was about twenty degrees above zero that day, and when you walked on the floor, you could feel it bounce because it was in such bad shape. And then after a facade grant to help Cliff and Bobby Sherrier put thirty North antiques in the building, here's what that building looks like today. Significant improvement in our downtown. MBC Fitness at twenty-eight North Cass received a facade improvement grant from the Village of Westmont. Here's what that business looks like today. And if you really want to take a walk down memory lane here, we've got a couple of businesses, The Frame Makers at ten North Cass and Vincitore Restaurant. Here's what those businesses used to look like years ago. The Big K Discount and the Stevens Department Store. And we've got a couple of photos after some facade grants to these respective businesses. Here's The Frame Makers at ten North Cass, and here's Vincitore Restaurant at fourteen. One of the most recently-approved grants, and we don't have an actual photo of the finished product yet here, for Nature's Best Market at the corner of Naperville Road and Cass Avenue, the board has just approved this, but we do have the, the illustration from Thatcher Oaks Awning Company as to what the new awning will look like that was approved for a downtown development grant by the Westmont Village Board recently. And then the last one that we want to talk about here is, and I've only got part of a picture of this, part of this is the Traveler's Cafe at twenty North Cass, but right over here is twenty-two North Cass. And we all know that as Irv Kaplan Interiors. And following a facade grant for Mr. and Mrs. Kaplan, this is what that business looks like today. So we do have some other photos of some other buildings, the before and after in the downtown and other areas of the village, but if you want to see those, you'll have to come and hear the mayor's State of the Village address on October fourteenth at Guava Restaurant, where a couple of those, we hope, will be, if he chooses to do so, woven into his comments at that time. Now, in addition to all of these direct development grants to downtown businesses in the Village of Westmont, one other thing we want to mention is that special signage directing customers to the downtown is also being developed as a result of some recommendations that originated in some ongoing discussions with the Downtown Business Alliance. This will be borne at the expense of the village and will help direct customers and shoppers to businesses in our downtown. So the next time someone asks, what has the village done to help downtown businesses, it is our hope that this discussion will serve as a comprehensive answer to that question. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you. Are there any initial comments from Board members? Or I have a letter that I would like to read from a resident, and then if there are any comments from- comments from board members, to hear those and then open up the discussion for, once again, because we have had this as an agenda item before at our last meeting, to offer business leaders or community individuals to come up to speak on this item. The letter that I have before me is from Marcel Levecque, who has been a longtime resident of the Village of Westmont. He is now retired. He was like the Executive Director for the Bank of Westmont and I believe for LaSalle Bank when it was first formed, but has lived in the Village for well over, I would say, 30 to 40 years. I had the opportunity to talk to him last evening at the Chamber event, and unfortunately, he was not able to be here this evening, but he wrote a letter that he would like to have me read at this time. "I wanted to be at this meeting tonight, but I have another commitment. However, I wanted to voice my opinions about downtown parking. I have heard a lot of talk over the years about parking in downtown Westmont. It is sad that it comes up so often and nothing ever seems to be resolved. Now there's discussion about business employees having to pay for parking their cars for their privilege of working in Westmont. Are Village employees charged for parking while they are at work? We need the businesses in Westmont to thrive, and the employees need a place to park their cars. We don't want them to start quitting their jobs because they cannot afford to park and work here. That would hurt the downtown businesses and it would hurt Westmont. We provide all kinds of parking for commuters. We have parking for customers, but nothing to help the business owners or employees. I think what the Village of Westmont needs to do is look at properties north and south of the tracks and east and west of Cass Avenue and buy up whatever properties are available at today's prices. Issue bonds or do whatever is necessary to acquire those properties. You have the authority to do that. Cars are not going away. There's always going to be a need for more parking. What we need is a large parking garage, but that probably won't happen because there's no place to build one. And if we don't have parking spaces for downtown employees, open up another lot somewhere. We're supposed to have enough downtown parking spots. Maybe we do and maybe we don't. But having employees pay to park and work isn't going to help the situation any. I think it is time to look ahead and not try to hurt our businesses. Without the employees, there wouldn't be a need for people to come into downtown Westmont. Thank you for listening to my opinion. Marcel Levecque." We will enter that into the official record. So unless there's any comments now from the board members, I would entertain the opportunity for individuals to come up to the podium, give us their name and address, and address this particular issue. Do we have anyone wishing to come forth at this time?
My name is Jennifer and I work at the Westmont Pharmacy. I am appalled at what you did to us. When we were here on Thursday, everything was nice. You guys were nice to us. You told us, "Let's wait the six months. Let's see what happens. We're not here on Monday, you stab us in the back." I don't appreciate that. You people are voted in. We gave you our vote for you to do the best for this village. And for you, Mr. Fleming, to tell us that you don't want to listen to our rhetoric again? What is that all about? You are put on this board to listen to the people. I'm sorry if it inconveniences you, but you know what? It will inconvenience me to have to pay to park. I'm a part-time employee. I cannot afford to spend my money to pay you another tax.
Thank you.
Good evening. Keep it brief. Just thank you to the Board for reconsideration on this. I don't want to see anybody hurt by it, but I think it's an important step that we have this fee. And just to reiterate kind of what I said before, there is nobody being mandated to pay this fee. There will still be plenty of free parking available, and I think that's an important consideration for both the businesses and the Board when they do finally vote on this, just to understand that this is not a fee that's implemented to every single person, that it's going to be an option. And it's for the privilege to park close. And other than that, there will be free parking. And just as kind of an aside, apart from that, thank you for the facade grant. It was for our doors, and we had two very narrow doors, and every single time a customer comes in or out with a picture, it is such a treat to have that door swinging. And they really appreciate it. So thank you again for reconsideration on this.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Juan Moon Dragon. I'm new to the business in this downtown area, okay? I mean, though I'm new in the business, I still find it kind of a problem, as she said, that you're trying, not really trying to help businesses open up in the downtown area. I mean, we have so many empty buildings in the area, and now instead of trying to find a way to attract business owners like myself to open up their businesses, now you're going to have them to consider twice about opening up a business and having employees. I use my own personal experience because at the time it took us to be able to get a permit to open up a store. If we want to really help downtown Westmont, you should consider revising your business license procedures. Because there's other people who want to open up a business, but they cannot wait three to six, two, three months for them to get on the Board, to be voted on, because in the same time they're losing money, they're paying rents, and they don't understand why. Okay, the thing we should be concentrating on is not the parking for employees, but we should concentrate on getting more businesses in, okay? We're lucky, we opened up our business. But still, how many more people out there want to open up a business but they can't because of the red tape they have to go through? Okay, we have so many empty buildings. Downtown Westmont, when you consider downtown Westmont to downtown, let's say, some of the other towns in the area, they're booming, okay? They have one or two empty spots, fine. But here in Westmont, right in front of the train station, we have about three or four empty buildings. Why? Because people are not willing to come in because they understand how hard it is to get a license in this area, okay? Parking for our people should be also considered. Even though my wife and I are the only people working here, if we have to pay parking, it's not going to help us either. If we decide to want to just expand, we'd have to reconsider that if we start getting more employees, because they would have to pay parking, okay? Please, you want to help downtown Westmont, forget about charging for parking for the businesses. Consider revising your business procedures to be able to help businesses open up. You're saying you provide the facades, perfect. Buildings are beautiful, but a lot of them are empty, okay? Consider revising what is the procedures you need to be open up a business. I know you have to be careful. I know you have to adhere some of the codes, but consider. At these times, people who are willing to open up a business are willing to take a risk, you should help them.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments.
Hello. Tim Janakopoulos, over at 15 North Cass Karma Salon. I just want to also back what Barb was saying, that again, this is actually like a luxury. It's, if you want to get the permit, you can purchase the permit. You don't have to. There's plenty of parking. You can park in a four-hour spot. You can park in a two-hour spot. You can move their car all you want. This is dedicated parking for employees that want to pay for them, that, the whole reason we did do this was to open and free that lot up at Cass and Burlington to allow customers to come in and not feel deterred to come in. There's no parking. Again, businesses were taking up this spot. It's going to free that up, allow them to come in, and it's giving individuals that want to pay for the permits, spots to park. The other thing we have to remember, we're proposing to open up a business fund or a parking fund. This is a way to actually get some monies, get them into that fund, and look into the future. I think the whole thing with the Chamber, we're trying to better the businesses, not hurt them. And to get some funds generated so that down the road, we can build that parking garage or do whatnot. This is kind of a one step to get a little closer to that. And I want to thank Lee Fleming, if anything. He listens, and he's the one really out there, I see him a lot, supporting the businesses locally. So, thank you, Lee.
Tim, quick question. How many employees do you have?
We have 15. 15 or 16.
And they know that this is on the agenda? You've spoken to them, and are you being met with any resistance from them?
Not at all. We have, we're actually getting everything together. Cars, names, license plates. We're ready for town to come around and ask for these kind of things so that we can get the permits issued, so they can track who has them. And they all understand that if they can't afford it or they don't want that privilege, then they can, they can park on the street. They can park at a four-hour spot. They can move their car if they'd like. And if you're part-time, you're not there all the time, don't get a permit, you know? Go and park in the free spots, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I just wanted to point out that we're pretty much where we were a couple of weeks ago. We have businesses that both support this and businesses that are opposing it, and there's strong passion on both sides. And I'm thankful for the Village Board to take the time to listen to the different opinions and to make a call on this, because parking is an important part of the success of downtown Westmont, and it is important to our future, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Last call. Okay, with that being said, comments from board members?
You know, it seems like, I don't want to see a split between the businesses downtown either. We're trying to make it work down here, and then we don't want them against each other on this issue. The big thing seems to be is that we have free parking, but it's only four hours or two hours. And so, they're forced, if they're working full-time or part-time, for an eight hours, they have to go move their car. Why can't we make those hours longer then? So if it is going to be free parking down on Burlington Avenue, a little bit farther down, it's for the whole shift that they're there. Let the ones that want to park closer pay the parking fee, the ones that don't, and will be willing to walk a block or two, let them have it so they have enough time so they can work all day and not be infringed on it.
Other comments?
The only thing I'm worried about is, you know, you get your creative commuters that will, there's a certain crew that if you extend the hours, they don't care who works in Westmont. They will park there and jump on the train. And that is to be avoided at all costs.
But we've got at least 60 spots on any one day on that commuter lot, and have for the last two years, that haven't been used. So I don't think if we put it down, however we move it or where we put it, we're not going to be overinvented with parkers, there are not enough spots down there. We don't.
No, but what I'm saying is if you extend them to six or, you know, eight hours for parking, the commuters will park there. They will.
And how about if we use the placards for them like we were talking about before, so they know who they are?
Right. Exactly. There's got to be a system to mark what the employees' cars are so that it's not abused. I noticed in the pictures that Fred put up, when we were looking at the lovely use of the facade grants and the improvements to the buildings, if there is a big van or a car that is parked in front of someone's business, say it's Tim's Karma, and somebody else who's an employee or an owner from a different business decides that they don't want to block their business, they're going to park in front of Tim's business for six or eight hours or, you know, get chalked and move their car back and forth. I don't think that's appropriate. I think human use and through, I think we all do it, and I think it's a known habit. If somebody wants to go to a little store on Cass, let's say somebody wants to go eat at Amber, and all the parking spaces in front are taken and the lot's taken with Amber's employees and Karma's employees and Vincitore's employers, are we going to stop there? No. I think the reality is, is there has to be that perception that when people are going down Cass, whether they plan to or not, if there is an open space, they are more than likely to stop. If they are even destined to go somewhere and it is parked up, they will keep on going. Several of us have talked about this. We do it ourselves. I frequent downtown Westmont, and I can tell you that at Karma, when I go to get my hair done, if I had, if I could not park right next to Amber and walk into Karma, if it were all parked up with the girls who cut my hair and Amber's employees and all that, I'd find another place to go get my haircut. I, who am paying, should go, you know, three blocks down. It doesn't work that way. So I know that this is, you know, this is a torn issue, and it's one we're not going to please everybody. We are back to one of those, as Larry said, square ones. But I think for the good of this town and to attract people, for instance, at Mondragon, it's a small store. It has small signage. Imagine if the dog groomers parked all the spaces in front of your business all day long. Would that help your business? I don't think so. So, you know, the letter from Marcel said we need to have purchased, you know, property and make lots somewhere else. We've designated them. We've already looked at that, you know? The staff has come up with the designations. So I think that with the option of, you know, we're not going to police this and say, "If you work in a downtown business, you will report your car and you will have a hangtag and you will get a permit." We're not. We are making it so that we can have the happy medium. The business owners aren't blocked out by other employees' cars. People who want to park closer can do so. I think that's the happy medium. And as far as a fee, you know, it's, the Village is going to incur the cost of handtags, hangtags, the cost of resigning to say, "These are permits now, not for commuters. They are for Village employees only, and they will have a different color other than the blue in this lot and the yellow in that lot." That, it costs money. And all of that, the fee is not to make money. The fee is to cover the cost of implementing the program. That's just, just how it is. So I think it's a happy medium that we're coming to.
Anyone else?
I think both ideas are very good. I would just add, we went from the $45, you know, 180 a year, down to 100. Even to make it more palatable, I would recommend if you wanted to pay it all in one lump sum, $75.
For a year?
For a year. If you want to make it more palatable for people. Just trying to, you know, find that happy medium. You know, you don't want to charge too much, but you don't have to buy it, but if you want to buy it, here it is. This is a nice option, you know?
Fred, correct me if I'm wrong. I thought I heard two different things, though. Were we going to make a special spot, move the commuters down a block or so, and make that just for employees?
Yes. On West Burlington.
And I thought I heard Steve may say that we were going to incorporate that with the commuter, where they were going to be able to park in with the commuters. Or did I get that wrong?
I, Steve's right there. I'll let him speak for himself.
Here he comes.
Burlington?
Yeah.
The first, I forget the number now. What was the quantity?
15.
The first 15 stalls will be changed to this type of permitted parking, and the commuters will be moved down 15 stalls. So the beginning of the commuter lot will start 15 stalls further down.
And that will be employees only?
That's the proposal.
So why can't we make that area eight hours in?
It will be.
So then there is free parking.
Well, no.
That's the permit, right? Can't we make free parking farther down for the employees so they can walk then? Since we've got an abundance of space?
Leave the commuters where they are and put the...
No, no, no. I'm saying, the people that are going to pay, make them closer. But we've still got 60-some spaces down at the end.
All of the commuter parking is available for free after a certain, it's like nine o'clock in the morning. o'clock in the morning. I, I forget what the time is, but we don't, you only need a permit to be there for that opening window.
It's nine-thirty, I believe.
And then how many hour after that?
I don't think it's timed.
It's unlimited. You just can't leave your car there overnight.
Right, yeah, it's a good point. Get out by 2:00 a.m.
So, everything down Burlington after nine-thirty in the morning is free, unlimited, anyhow?
Correct. And the lot here.
I have to verify that. I know we do that here for sure, and it's signed that way. I don't know that we promote that or officially do that on Burlington, but we could. But I, I will also say that's, you know, that's a good three-quarters of a mile down.
Well, I'm trying to address the lady that works at the drugstore, who works part-time, and have a parking place for her that's not going to cost her anything.
True. And I, I don't know if...
And that she has to go move her car every couple of hours.
Part-time days or part-time during the day, but there is, there is, you know, four-hour limit is, you know, the, all the immediate public parking, all the streets adjacent to downtown.
Other comments, board members?
So, let's see if I got this straight. If we take the first fifteen spaces and charge the twenty-five, or they can park all the way down to the end, where there's a lot of empty spots after nine-thirty, and they don't get charged at all, and they can leave it there eight hours.
Well, they can park anywhere.
Or they can park downtown and move their car every three hours and fifty-five minutes if they had to. Well, is it two or three hours? What is it downtown?
Two, two hours on the street, I believe, Steve.
Two hours on the street. So, I mean, every two hours. So, I mean, they're either going to move the...
Cass is one, Lincoln, Linden are different.
So, wherever they move, they're towards the center of town, they would have to get out and keep moving their car if they wanted to have free parking. So, there, there's several options there, aren't there?
Yes.
How many cars are we looking at totals? Anybody have a number?
Well, again, when, when we did the, I think there were, what, how many passes were issued in the past, Jenny? I think it was close to a hundred.
Close to a hundred, yeah.
And when we did our walking survey of the businesses in that first two blocks, trustee, I believe we came up with, there were something like sixty-four to sixty-seven employees that indicated that they would get a permit if it, if there were no charge for it. If there were a charge for it, the number dropped down to about sixteen.
And does the second block really get included in that?
It was just the first few businesses in the second block. We, we believe that the, you know, the, the demand on parking is most acute in that first block north of the railroad tracks on Cass Avenue.
See, I'm at a loss in back and forth on this. I feel, I feel we should be rewarding employees who are willing to walk away from downtown and park their car further down, not charge them. On the other hand, and, and I feel we're hurting the businesses who, we should be thrilled that a business can employ fifteen or thirteen people with the economy the way it is. So, this, this is such a horrible feeling that I, I want to make sure there's many options. To me, the twenty-five dollars is, is it worth that much for the next, like I said, I'd rather do a trial period on something than then start charging the money and finding out that people would rather move their car than, than pay the twenty-five a quarter. But again, if we give them lots of options, you know, you, you're in the center of town, you're going to have to move your car every two hours or four hours, depending where you're parking. Or you pay the forty-five, you can leave it there in those fifteen spots, or seventeen spots on the north side of Quincy is in here, too. So, there's options of parking there. Or walk further down and have it free and leave your car there for eight hours. At least they have three different type options. So, and, and, and if they want to do a year and save twenty-five, I have no problems with that. I don't think we're going to, I just don't think we're going to make the money on this to make it that difficult on the businesses. And with the economy the way it is, I'm thrilled if a business can have several employees still working, and I don't want to put a hardship on a business or an employee. It's just too difficult of a time right now, and too many people are out of work.
Pat, I don't agree with the option of moving your car every two or three hours. It's not fair to the other business owners around.
It's not fair, but is it legal?
Yes, but I think that that's something that we should look at, that if, that should be discouraged, because it's not fair to block other customers to other businesses.
Then, then have the seventeen parking spots free. If you're trying to encourage people to move. You're not encouraging them by charging them. That's what I'm trying to say. You're not encouraging the people to do this, you're charging them. You're making a hardship. So, you either give those fifteen or seventeen lots free and, and just go first come, first served, gets a permit, because the people do have the option, and it's absolutely legal for them to come downtown and move their car every two hours. Now, if they, if we can get the cops to patrol every two hours and make sure they're ticketed to try to discourage them from doing that, that's one thing. But I don't know if we have the manpower to do it. So, I'm just looking at them staying downtown is absolutely legal, as long as they move those cars. And you don't want it.
The program is not going to be successful, whatever we decide on, unless there's enforcement by the, by the police department. It's just not, not going to happen. We've already identified that there's a shortage of time available and money for our police officers to patrol parking downtown. But the suggestion that was, was made by our acting chief, Tom Mullen, is that they will, they will come in to enforce the parking at different times during the week, so that the people will not know when, when they're going to go in to check on them. But let's face it, if somebody wants to, to try to get away with it and not, not pay or not conform to the rules, they will find a way to do it.
The first hundred dollars...
Program will not be successful unless we get the cooperation of the business owners, pure, pure and simple, in, in, in my estimation, because they will figure out ways to circumvent what the requirements are. And I believe in our discussion, somebody brought up the possibility that we will go back, what, six, six months or so, a time period, and look at it again and see what, how things are going, and if it is, in fact, helping business. You know, our, our intention is to help business, not to hurt business, and it's, as everyone has stated, it's, it's a, it's a split between those that want to do this and those that don't. Unfortunately, that's a decision that, that we have to make as, as elected officials, to try to make decisions that we feel are best for, for everyone. And, and there's never going to be a, everyone come into agreement on a situation like this. But we are, we are trying to come up with a solution. We're trying to, we're trying to help. We're not out to destroy business. We're out to help business in the village. Any other comments from board members?
One of the other things before, like trustee Fleming was going to say something, but one of the other things that I brought up was if the business would buy into it, and they would pay some of the cost, and we said that's illegal, and, and we understand that, or we couldn't do that, the business.
But they could volunteer, right?
But they can volunteer. And that's where I was coming from with the seventy-five dollars a year. So, if, you know, for business, and again, I know businesses are hurting, and I, I'm not in their shoes, so I, I would rely on them to say yes or no. But, you know, maybe they split the cost, thirty-seven fifty for the year, you know? Then again, it becomes more palatable. Then you got the free parking further on down, you got other options, and, you know, you're not, hopefully, you're not hurting the business with that situation.
Now, opening up parking for consumers is certainly, in the long run, going to help the businesses. We all said many times, you know, we'll just keep on driving, because there's no place to park. You know, if the weather's nice, I might walk two blocks. If it's pouring down rain, you know, I'm headed somewhere else. On the other hand, it's pretty much common practice everywhere you look. You know, if you want to, if you work in the city, you park to put your car at the train. If you work in Downers Grove, Hinsdale, wherever, you know, we really need to get a parking fund started, and while this would be very, very small, it's going to benefit the businesses in the future. If I'm a business owner, I want my consumer, my customer, to be able to walk in my door with as much ease as possible. If it's storming, if it's cold, if it's a beautiful sunny day, I want it really convenient for them to get in my door, and I would think our business owners feel the same way. It is, it's, it's tough, but, you know, we've, we have to make a move at some point. We have to do something. I mean, this was, this has been, Marceli Fek said it best, this has been going on for years and years and years. And, you know, when you have business owners parking their car on Cass Avenue, you know, that's keeping consumers from getting into businesses. That would make me angry if I was a business owner. I'd be really mad. I'd be throwing things. I, I might even key the car. No, I'm just kidding. Just kidding. I wouldn't do that. I'd never do that. But I mean, come on. You know, it's a little bit of common sense, and I always say, if, if it's called common sense, why is it so uncommon? You know, this is crazy. We have to do something. And I, and I honestly believe, in my heart of hearts, seventy-five dollars a year, you know, covers our costs, it starts the fund that we've all wanted to do, business owners and village alike. I think it's a first step, and we need to move forward.
Other comments?
Well, the only thing that I can say is, the first time I ran for election, I was questioned about the parking scenarios downtown. Main Street did several surveys and interviews and that at that point in time. Fell upon the wayside. Second time I ran, the question came again. What are we going to do about the parking downtown? It kind of got pushed to the backburners, or them other things that were going on. So, now it's up again. Change is difficult for people, period, no matter how you put it. But the way this program is set up, it's set up that you can still park free in this village. You're just going to have to walk a little bit further. All's, all's we're asking is that the parking closest to your businesses be left open for potential customers. It's not a tax, and I find that rather, I, I don't find that the proper way to look at it. It's not a tax. The fund that we're talking about also, this would go in to help defray the cost of extra signage that could be put up, say, towards Ogden Avenue, pointing people to the downtown district. And maintaining, for instance, like Mr. Kimball said, the plowing of the downtown sidewalks is not mandatory by the village, but we do it. We do it because we care about the downtown. I mean, I don't, I don't see where, you know, no matter what we do, or what we come up with, there's always going to be those opposed, there's always going to be those for. The only thing I can say, I think this is about the best way to go at this point in time, and in six months, we sit down, take a look at it again, see how it's working, and we go from there.
Mayor, I've got a couple of questions, if I may?
Yes, sir.
When is this program going to be implemented if it's approved? The ordinance as drafted right now says, you know, it's effective upon passage and approval by the board. But I think for the sake of the business owners, if it's approved, they want to know how quickly can we get this up and running? When can the parking tags be issued? When is the signage going to be in place? Should we set a date certain, or should the ordinance be more, I guess, vague, and at such time as staff gets the program operating?
John, I think it was a recommendation of the Downtown Alliance Task Force that this become effective January first of two thousand and ten.
If they can, if they can speed it up, Thanksgiving would be nice, so that the Christmas traffic for downtown, that this would be implemented by Thanksgiving. You lose the whole, you lose all the people who are going to be shopping close to home if we don't at least try to help the business owners.
Is that the first quarter free?
Throw that out there.
Is, is their quarterly fee going to run on what, the time they purchase it, or is it going to be calendar year?
Well, the way the ordinance states now, it, there's no proration of the fee, but if you implement the program, and other than the first day of a quarter, then that's something you guys have to talk about.
Because I'm thinking of a new employee coming in, you know, in the middle of a quarter and needs a parking spot if there's an available one, so I don't know how you want to handle that.
They might have to park in a free spot until that quarter comes up, and then get a permit done if they want it.
Or buy it, or just buy it the first time. Same as, you know...
But if it, if it could get implemented earlier than the first, if it would help downtown, then I think then the purchase of permits, say, you know, by December one, covers the first quarter.
Prior to, it's free.
No, it covers through, yeah.
First quarter.
Right, but if you, if you buy it by December one, it goes to and through the first quarter of two thousand and ten.
That could work.
It's easier to administer, I would imagine, for the clerk's office to do it that way.
Sure. I mean, and it makes sense, it's...
How long will it take us to get those fifteen spots, the commuters, to be moving down? We'll have to get signage up, so they know they're going to have to move.
Well, the signage will have to go up. And that, and in talking about taxes, I think everybody ought to realize, we're losing money by giving these fifteen spaces, because we get seventy-five dollars for a commuter for a quarter. So, it's not, we're not trying to tax, we're trying to help, but we are giving up money.
And I think it's very possible. Those first fifteen spaces are usually taken by people who are on the really, really, really early train, and it's still mighty dark out. We might have to impose upon the police department to have an officer out there and say, hey, guess what? These are no longer parking spaces for commuters. You know, you gotta, you gotta move down, because they aren't going to see it. They're pulling in there at, you know, four-thirty in the morning.
Steve, was there a comment on the signs?
Steve, did you want to make a comment on the signage?
Just to answer that, the, the signs themselves are not difficult, and in fact, even if it was a January implementation, I'd be trying to put posts in the ground sooner than that, just so that I can get them in the ground. But I, not to speak for, you know, Mr. Penzak, but the, I think the biggest administrative delay is putting the pieces in place, how are you, whether they're hang tags, whether there is, those have to be prepared, decided, ordered, and then, you know, the distribution process, too, and the application process, so that, I think that will drive the timeline for implementation. And I can, you know, on public works end, we can move quicker than that.
So, Jenny, maybe, should we get some information by Monday, so we can...
I think, I don't think we can have it by Monday, because Steve does all the ordering on that, and he's on vacation till Monday. Maybe when he first gets back, he can get to it. Yeah, and the police prefer the hanging tags. I know that. It's easier for them to see, so we'll go with the hanging tags.
Right, so I don't know about, that's all I'm saying, is I don't know about product availability and how long it would take to receive that, once ordered even.
I can check tomorrow and see if we can get any timeline at all, if anybody remembers, but...
Maybe his backup, because he usually has someone that backs him up when he's gone.
But he does most of those orders for those tags and stuff, so, he's done it for years.
You should be able to get things in place before, by the first of the year.
Oh, yeah. No, that's not a problem. That's not my worry.
So, that should be pretty good.
Question was...
Okay. And then my second question is, the way the ordinance was drafted at the last set of meetings, and it's still in there, it prohibits employees from parking in the village public lots located at Burlington and Cass and Irving and Cass. Is that the intention, and if so, how is that going to be monitored? Because employees don't have to display the hang tags unless they're in one of the designated parking areas, otherwise they can park for free anywhere they want.
That's what I'm saying. How are you going to monitor?
Now, we can put that language in there, but you'd actually have to watch an employee park and walk to work before you could issue a ticket.
I think the intent of that was that the permit holder does not entitle them to park there. Anybody can park in a public lot in any vehicle, anytime, and they're just subject to the time limit. Right? So, if they can do it, it doesn't matter if they are an employee, if they can, if they can stay within the time limit, they're welcome to do it. I know you were, the intent is to discourage that, but that's, that's the fact.
It's very possible, and there's going to be things that we're going to have to trust people use common sense, and if it affects businesses, I suspect that we'll hear from businesses saying, guess what? So-and-so's employees are completely abusing this, and they've decided the lot is theirs. So, and then we'll call Tom and ask him to look into it.
So, you'd like the language to remain, and if it's a problem due to complaints, then step up enforcement as necessary?
Yes.
And for now, I'll draft a January one commencement date, unless we hear otherwise?
Yeah, but I like Ellen's idea of implementing it December first, but they're paying for January one.
Well, the, the problem is, as was explained, I think, was getting the application process and the hang tags all ready to go prior to December first date. It, it may not, from the clerk's office, be read... It may not, from the clerk's office, be ready to implement until January 1.
Can we hold off till Monday night till we know from Ginny's office what the timeline looks like as far as if we can get the tags printed and...
Applications.
And the applications in?
Yeah.
It gives us sixty days, you know? That gives us all October, November.
And Steve will be back Monday and he can give me pricing, pretty much what he's taking.
Knowing him, he'll have it right in his head.
Is that okay, John, where you can just insert the date?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think Trustee Emery made a really good point. By implementing it December 1, think of all of our downtown restaurants and holiday luncheons and holiday dinners and groups that will be going in. You know, I think it's a great time to start it, if we can do it, if it can be done.
And do we want to implement the recommendation from Trustee Forsley? They pay ahead of seventy-five dollars for an entire year?
I think it's a good idea. I like it.
Okay. Include that. Any other changes?
The only thing I wanna add is I like what Trustee Scott said. We don't want to divide the downtown. I mean, this was an issue that some were for and some were against. But I think the main goal is, everybody wants more business in the downtown. Whether you're for or against it, the main goal for all of us here and the business owners is to get more consumers downtown and shop downtown Westmont. And one of the ways is to get the cars parked right in front. So once this issue is, you know, settled or voted on on Monday, I wish... I hope everyone can remember, our goal here at this board, all the businesses have the same goal. And that is to help the downtown businesses get more consumers.
I just have a question on the fifteen parking spots now. What are they? Are they permit B parking? When you shift them down, is that gonna push them into the meter parking? Or is there enough room? Are we gonna have to...
We're oversold anyway. We're always oversold.
Okay. But I mean, there's still fifteen empty B parking spots that... I mean, we're gonna have fifteen people who are now gonna have to move down. And I don't wanna have them coming in screaming now that they paid for B parking and now all the B spots are taken and only meter parking when they've paid for B.
Well, I think Trustee Scott's observation is very pertinent to that question. You know, we do have spots down further available that are open throughout the day.
Yeah, but I don't know if we...
Sixty, sixty that aren't metered.
Sixty that are not metered. But that's... But what comes first? You've got B, then metered?
Yes.
But I'm worried about, will these fifteen run into the metered portion? You're not gonna shove B people all the way down to the un-metered.
All it's moving is down is fifteen spaces.
Yeah, but I didn't know if we had fifteen empty B spaces every day.
Every day.
Okay, we got at least fifteen empty Bs.
B goes all the way to the meters?
I believe so, yes.
You got sixty empty spaces every day.
Sixty up there for the Bs. Okay. As long as we... Because I don't want these permit people coming in screaming and then getting the, you know, complaining to the railroad that we moved their spots on them. I don't wanna cause any problems. Okay.
Any other changes to be implemented?
Yeah, that's public comments.
Okay. Yes.
Quick question. Can we put in the ordinance the discount for buying the annual?
Yes. Yes, the attorney has it already in his notes. Thank you. Yes, very quickly.
Don't oversell. We'd oversell probably.
We do for the train, but... Whatever.
Whatever the going is.
Yeah, it'll be the same oversell rate, won't it, Ginny? The same percentage?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank everybody for their input. This'll be on our agenda for Monday evening. Next item, Downtown Parking Fund. Board to consider establishment of the Downtown Parking Fund a dedicated repository to address parking needs in the Downtown B1 Central Business District.
Yes, Your Honor, this is another one of the joint recommendations that originated with the Downtown Alliance Parking Task Force and is something that I think the Village Board has considered on at least a couple of occasions in the past. It has been sent back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I believe, in 2006 and 2008 for a recommendation. Basically, what this ordinance would seek to do is to create a dedicated parking fund for the benefit of parking in downtown for the maintenance and expansion of parking facilities. This could be used for such things as parking lot maintenance, acquiring new land for additional surface parking lots in the future, creation of parking garages or parking decks at some point in the future, striping of parking lots, signage to adequately identify public parking lots for the benefit of customers and patrons of the downtown businesses. Sources of revenue would be several. One could be the employee parking permit passes. One could be what might be considered in the near future, a fee for variances granted when businesses wanna come in and they're short the required number of parking spaces. For a number of years, the board has continued to grant parking variances without charge. The question is, should that be without charge? And if the board decides that there should be one, a nominal charge for parking variance is granted, then those fees would also go into this fund. Additional sources of revenue might be any government grants from the state and federal government that would be applicable to TOD parking strategies, expansion of parking services in the downtown, and other transfers from the general fund as authorized from time to time as the Village Board may see fit. But all expenditures from this fund would have to be expended for the express benefit of parking services and facilities in the Downtown Central V1 Business District.
Great.
Comment?
I have a question. On the... If we decide to do the variance fees, which I think would have been nice if we had it going a long time ago, if a business comes in and has to pay for the variance fee because they don't have enough parking for their employees, are we still making them pay for parking for their employees? Isn't that double dipping? No. It's interesting. So you're gonna make them pay a variance fee? Plus make them pay for their employee to park?
The variance fee would go into the parking fund for the benefit of parking for everyone. And the parking variance trustee is not only a function of the number of employees that they have, but also the size of their operation and the volume and the number of customers that they're going to generate.
I understand that, but I'm thinking of these businesses that don't have enough parking behind them for their employees. I mean, it's one thing to say they're business, they're customers. But if they have a place that doesn't have enough employee parking and now they have to... You know, they're gonna be hit with a fee. Plus, they're gonna have to be hit with a fee for parking their employees.
But that's something they have to take into consideration when they look at a property too.
There's still an option.
Yeah, the off-street parking requirement isn't just for employees or owners. It's for... It's a combination, as Fred said, that's calculated based... It's either employee-based or it's square footage-based, depending on the type of business. But that parking can be used for customers. It can be used for employees. It can be used for tenants who live upstairs, whatever. So it's not only for... The off-street parking requirements aren't only for employees. So I wouldn't consider it double dipping, because they can use the parking however they see fit.
And like you said, we've given the employees the option. They can park further down for free. They could, you know, depending on where the business is. They can, you know, they can pay. None of us like to move under the car, but they can move the car. So I mean, there are options there.
And even though this is for future consideration of the board in the very near future, there is an exception that would not be exceeded by a subsequent ordinance that says that if you require a variance of three spaces or less, you need not apply for a variance. That provision is in our downtown code so that the real small mom and pop businesses aren't overly burdened by that requirement.
Other comments? One of the issues that was addressed in Marcel's Levex letter was the idea to bond, to obtain more properties that we could utilize for parking. There have been a number of instances going back in history where there have been properties adjacent to the village that have been offered to the village for purchase, for parking. And it has been decided in a number of those situations that the village could not afford, was not willing to bond, take on additional debt to purchase those properties. Hence, they were not purchased for parking because of the cost not only of purchasing the property, but converting them into parking areas that would adhere to village code. So that has been something that has been looked at. And if the economy were better or if it improves, that's something I'm sure that this board will look at again in the future. Yes. Yes, please.
As you know, Bill Califford, 205 North Cath. Just a quick clarification. In the meetings that I was in in regards to this with the downtown businesses, I was under the impression that this fund was being set up for future parking and future expansion of parking as well as signage and stuff for changing of employee parking and stuff that we're doing now. From what was written in the newspaper last week and from Fred's comments tonight, I just wanna know that we're on the same page and understand. You were talking about maintenance of the existing parking lots, striping, paving, and that kind of stuff. So is this fund, then, the money's out of this fund going to be used to supplement your general maintenance that you do on the parking lots anyway? That is part of your expenditure throughout the village and stuff anyway? Or is that... You know, is this... Is this fund gonna go for the next time, let's say, Manning School Lot needs to be repaved and striped? Is that money to pay for that gonna come out of this fund? Or does that come out of your general maintenance fund that you have set up now for parking anyway? Am I making myself clear?
That would be a decision of the Village Board. But I think what the intention certainly is, Mr. Califford, is that, say, for example, the lot that the village owns at 33 North Lincoln, there's no money available in the general fund now to pave and stripe that lot or to acquire additional contiguous properties and make it a little bit larger lot. By establishing a fund, it's not a lot of money, but at least it's a step in the right direction to begin developing a sinking fund so that those kinds of activities could...
I'm all for establishing the fund. I think where I'm trying to get to the clarification is, what are those funds going to be used for? For future stuff or to maintain the stuff we have now? It's almost like you're talking the tollway here. Let's charge tolls until it's paid for and the dumb thing will never be paid for and there's never any money there.
I think you raise an interesting point, because I'm listening. I hear two different things. And Fred's point about, you know, our property on Lincoln, just to get that up and running is a lot of money.
But see, that's gonna be a new lot.
Once it's up and running, I don't know that I'm comfortable with this fund paying for the upkeep of it. I'd rather, in my mind, I'd rather see this fund give us a parking garage.
Right.
And, you know, if the fund ever gets so big, which I doubt any of us will ever see in our lifetime, then, you know, maybe it's time to say we don't need the fund anymore.
Yeah, I just don't wanna dwindle away before even using it for expansion, that it's being used to stripe and pave the existing lots that we have now. I can understand some of the funds coming out to, you know, just cover the cost of new signage for the new parking spaces for employees and that kind of stuff.
I'm not even... The more I think about it...
That's why I just wanna clarify that.
Well, and you kinda made me start thinking. I'm not sure that I see this fund as something that would be used for alley maintenance, just because the alley happens to be in the downtown.
It wouldn't be used.
I don't think it would be if it's not...
It wouldn't. Okay.
Yeah, if it's not going towards additional parking for the downtown.
I can, for startup and getting it going and buying it and getting it started, definitely. But maintenance, I'm a little uncomfortable with it.
Right. I wouldn't wanna see it just dwindle away on general maintenance that we have to do anyway.
It's a good point.
Is everyone comfortable with having the attorney word the ordinance to that effect? That it is not... It's going to be used for parking expansion, not for maintenance of current parking facilities?
That would include signage, landscaping, lighting associated with downtown parking, but not maintenance items. Correct.
Any other comments? Thank you. New business. Disabled American Veterans Board to consider a request from Don Duke Monaco Business and Professional, Chapter 47, for permission to hold its annual Forget Me Not Drive on Veterans Day, November 11th, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at Ogden and Cass intersection. Any comments? Next item, Lions Club Candy Day Program. Board to consider requests from Westmont Lions Club to solicit donations on Friday and Saturday, October 9th and 10th, for Lions Candy Day. Any questions?
I think we have a lion here.
Thank you. Next item. Mellow Yellow LLC Taxi License. Board to consider setting a date, October 15th, 2009, to allow this item to go to public hearing to determine if public interest is served by expanding the number of taxi cab license holders in the village of Westmont to nine. Anyone here to speak on this item?
I was asking if you had any questions. It's actually Metro Yellow Cab Company, not Mellow Yellow.
I kinda like Mellow.
Get that on the record, so. Mellow Yellow is actually a pop, I think, isn't it?
Tonight, we really just set the date, don't we? I mean, our discussion will really be on that date. Correct?
I don't know if we're gonna be able to determine who inserted the word metro or the word mellow instead of metro.
I can tell you who put it in there. Kerry put it in there. He was sure that's what it said. I know Kerry put it in there.
So it's supposed to be metro, M-E-T-R-O?
M-E-T-R-O, right, Metro Yellow.
Any other questions?
Just a procedural question. The ordinance provides that before the board considers issuance of a taxi license, the clerk shall publish a notice in the newspapers thirty days in advance. There shall be a public hearing and the board makes the decision. I know it's traditionally come to the board about thirty days or fifteen days in advance as a heads up, by the way, we're gonna have a public hearing. It's not required by the ordinance that you know about this or that the applicant be here prior to the actual public hearing. So I don't know if you wanna continue to hear these requests prior to the public hearing or if it should just come up on an agenda. Hey, we're gonna have the public hearing this date. There was proper publication.
I think it's fine if it just... Yeah. Just pops up on the agenda.
Can I ask a gentleman a question?
Sure.
You know, there's eight other ones in town already. You think there's enough business for a ninth?
Yeah, actually, I do. For a quality cab company, I do. Eight of the twelve drivers that I'm ready to license in Westmont right now, well, not currently, they're currently working for me. We're working for other cab companies and currently hold Westmont licenses. It's at their request that we're actually here. We're currently doing business in Oak Brook. We started out with two cabs in Oak Brook. I'm up to sixteen cabs in Oak Brook simply because of the fact that we're providing a better service, better cars, better prices, better discounts, everything. So it's a better... It's a better program. The drivers left for better working conditions. They left for a better opportunity. And that's what we're actually gonna provide to the citizens of Westmont and through DuPage County. We've already put in our application to be part of the Ride DuPage program through PACE and the Paratransit programs, as well as getting involved in any other senior programs or any other local community programs that are available. One of the things I'm real big on, and unfortunately, you gentlemen from the chamber already left, I was gonna give them a card. I do join chambers of commerces throughout the area. We are committed, and I've always been, I've been in the business twenty-six years, to the existing cab companies in town. I actually worked for one for nineteen years. Okay? I'm... We're committed to actually developing business in town, solving some of your parking issues in town by creating a cab company that's actually in town that you can actually see. They're not just sitting at a hotel waiting for people to go to and from the airports. You're people who are going to and from your restaurants and to and from your... The local establishments that you have here, the restaurants, the bars, and everything else. I've been in town, actually, I've not solicited one iota in town, even though eight or nine of my drivers would love me to. I don't do that. We don't operate that way. I've been in and out of town and I probably... I've been in and out of town, and I probably see cabs on Ogden, and at the hotel. I've stopped at six different trains today. I've also seen a cab once.
You're not out there when there's none of them. You may have as many as 15, but every day.
First thing in the morning, that's it. Late after.
Like 1:00 in the afternoon, take a ride by sometimes.
Two shifts.
We've received, on the same issue, a number of comments from residents and business owners that there's a, seems to be an extremely large number of cabs parked on the north side of the tracks over here throughout the day. I'm wondering if you care to comment on that.
That could be very easily limited. If you look at Lisle, Lisle doesn't allow cabs to park there at all. It's only at the times of when the trains are in, the cabs actually pull up, there's a lane, they don't park in the bus lane, they actually park in a different lane, and the residents actually load and leave. You don't need a cab sitting out there 24 hours a day.
Right.
Trains come in at certain times. Drivers are smart enough to know that.
Since we're really not having the conversation about it tonight, per se, I would really encourage some of our residents that use taxi services to come to the public hearing, and tell us if you think there's a need.
I have a question-
I think you'll find there is.
I have a question for John, is if we issue the license, and it takes the license, taxi cab license holders in the village to nine, is there a limit in how many cabs can operate under that license?
Oh, how, the number of cabs, no. Not in terms of-
So it's one license for the company, and then as many as you think the, you know, market will bear, or that type of thing?
That's very true. It's what the market demand will actually dictate how many cabs any, any one company runs in, in any one particular town. No cab company runs all their cabs in one town.
Right.
Except for the city of Chicago.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering if you've, you know, I suppose, I'll ask it on the public hearing date, whether you've done your market research as to how many cabs you think you would put in Westmont.
I can tell you I would start with eight to 12 cabs immediately in Westmont. Out of those cabs, you're covering a 24-hour period, seven days a week, you'll probably see two to four cabs on a daily basis throughout the time, with that, with that amount of caps. As demand increases, and if we actually do get involved, the more of the pilot two, or the Ride DuPage program and Paratransit, you'll probably see more. It, demand dictates everything. You know, that's, the more customers that use the cars, the more cars that we need to put on, so.
My main interest is if you offer senior citizen discounts-
Yes, we do.
And handicap discounts.
Not only do we offer that, we're also in the process of moving some of, we're owned by Yellow and Checker in Chicago. We're a completely suburban operation, so we run totally separately. We are actually purchasing a couple of the handicap vehicles. We're going to be the first cab company in Chicagoland area to actually put on handicap vehicles as cabs, not that much more expensive than a regular cab for people with wheelchairs, that'd be wheelchair accessible. So, and we actually plan to put on in all the counties. We currently have offices, we're in another, another difference between what we do and other cab companies do, we currently have offices in North Chicago, Waukegan, Tinley Park, and we are looking for a location. Fortunately, I couldn't use your downtown location, because I need parking for 20, 30, 40, 50 cars to come in and pay their dues, and get their, get their paperwork done and everything else. So we're looking for an office space somewhere within DuPage County. It's much more convenient for the businesses in DuPage County. We're not just an entity that's somewhere off in, in the universe. One of my competitors actually, actually dispatches most, or takes most of their phone calls in Pakistan. We don't. We don't have an automated phone system, it's all live operators, we employ people. And that's what we're in the business to do. We employ people, and we move people where they need to go, A, from A to B. Yellow's got a name in, in Chicago since 1915, and what they do best is move people locally, and we're going to bring that out to the suburbs. It's not all about O'Hare, it's not all about the long rides. There's a need for local service in the suburbs, a big need for it. And I'm talking to somebody who actually built two other companies to do the opposite, so.
So how much, how much, typically, how much is it going to cost me as a resident to have you come to my house, pick me up, take me to Village Hall so I can pay my water bill, and then take me back home again?
$2 flagpole and $2 a mile.
$2 a mile.
We have one rate meter in our cars, that's it. On top of that, I'd be more than happy to give you a $3 discount coupon. If your ride's $3, that's because you're a senior citizen. No, coupons are available to anybody. I'll leave you a stack at Village Hall. Anybody in the city of Westmont wants to come in and get a coupon, feel free.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Just wondering how you would handle the Olympics, but we'll worry about that in today.
We can talk about all these things on October 15th.
Hopefully, it's coming, and hopefully, we're putting on a lot more cabs to handle it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll, I'll be notified when the actual-
Hearing is?
Well-
Right. Do we have the date on her?
According to here, it's October 15th.
October 15th.
October 15th. Will be the public hearing.
Is it also Thursday?
Two weeks from today. Yes, it's two weeks from today. Thank you.
Next item, Manning School Road Closure During School Days. Board to consider ordinance approving a revision of the code of ordinances for Westmont. Section 78-163, streets closed during certain hours.
Yes, Mayor, it is that simple, this ordinance for this road closure restriction for the school operations already exists. We're just looking, as a matter of housekeeping, to change the actual effective hours to more accurately reflect the school day that is occurring now. I did want to add one other item, right on the board action cover, it says there are no documents attached, but flipping through the packet, there's, you know, something on page two that has nothing to do with this request. I think I, you'll recognize it as old business, we did maybe a half a year ago, so it's, that was just, I must have overtyped the other document when I turned it in. You can disregard all of that.
Because it's part of your draft ordinance right now, because Anne Marie, when she drafted the ordinance, thought that was to be included.
I only noticed it tonight, so I don't know. The actual request is written in the body of the description, it's just changing the hours, the rest is the same.
Questions? Thank you. Next item, liquor licensed establishment hours of operation. Board to consider changing the hours of operation for liquor licensed establishments. I have asked Tom Mulhern, our acting police chief, to look into this item, as a possibility of looking at changing the hours of serving liquor in the village of, of Westmont. And that may also entail some conversation, not only hours of serving, but hours of selling packaged liquors in the village. For example, the village of Downers Grove, the villages have different, they all have different hours of operation, but the village of Downers Grove interviews to be able to buy liquor until noon. They have just changed their hours by ordinance, stating that you can, you can, you can, you can drink alcohol, and you can purchase alcohol seven days a week, starting at 9:00 a.m. in the morning. And my big concern is the consumption of, of alcohol early in, in the morning, like the hours between like 6:00 a.m. and, and 9:00 a.m., as to whether or not that is something that the board would like to consider, the possibility of changing. It's been that way for many, many years, but I think it's time to look at that and bring that item up for discussion and consideration. And Tom has some background information that he would like to also share with us this evening.
At the mayor's request, I did a survey of local communities, went through their ordinances and checked, and you have that in the board action request. Times vary, they vary from type of operation. Some businesses had a licensed class, your starting time, as the mayor mentioned, packaged goods may start later, restaurants start 11 o'clock, it varied from town to town. The mayor had recommended that the, our starting time be moved back from, it's currently 6:00 a.m. on the weekdays, and on Saturday mornings, to 9:00 a.m., and our time of start time of 9:00 a.m., which is currently in place on Sunday mornings, remain in place.
Any comments from board members?
I'm curious as to, there's a lot of times we're out at the train at, you know, oh dark 30, and we see people going in and out of the Uptown, and we're like, man, you know, because we just rolled out of bed. And it may have something to do with the fact of the history of the village and the certain establishments we have here, and I certainly think that the packaged goods can wait till later, but I'm just wondering, like, Uptown or Potbelly, if they get a lot of people that are working third shift, and they come off of work, what is strange to us to see someone, you know, going into a bar at 7:00 a.m., but, you know, these guys who work midnights, when they get off, it's no different from the, for them to go get a drink when they get off work than it is for, you know, the people to pile off the train and go get a drink, you know, before dinner. So I'm just curious as to how much of it is perception, because Uptown is the type of establishment that is going to get a lot of blue collar, and maybe catering to people who, you know, they've been working all night, this is their 5:00, they want a drink, and then they go home and go to bed, and start all over again. So I don't know, what time does Bellamini's open in Hinsdale?
I have that, because they have a separate, they have a distinct license, separate license. There says restaurant based on 50 Fifth Street. One moment. That's the one page I don't have in my, it's not in the packet.
The reason I ask is-
I believe it was like 9:00 or 10:00, 10:01.
I thought that, because I, even when I was in high school in Hinsdale, we used to go to swim practice, and they'd already be filing into Bellamini's.
It's, there's this, I was surprised, because I thought it would be like around 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning, it was a later time. Trustee, I mean, you are correct, from a person who used to work midnight shift, who would get off at 7:00 in the morning, your times are changed. While you're getting up and having breakfast, I'm looking for something for dinner, or something, you know, get a quick snack and go home and get something to eat.
You know, it's alien to us, because, you know, most of us are on the day schedule, night sleep cycle, and how much of a problem is there with the third shift going to some of these places? To get more calls?
I didn't see an increase in calls. I mean, it's just, I guess it was just like in the survey, looking with other towns, I, they can't say that there's an increase in calls at bars in the morning. I did get a phone call today from a resident curious about this item, and said that Uptown, and Mr. Carlson here, and I'll let him speak for his clientele, the owner of Uptown, but the call I got was that there's people from Pepperidge Farm, and from Good Samaritan Hospitals, other local hospitals that work the overnight shift, that come stop for a drink on their way home, before they go home and get some, get some sleep, or do for the rest of their day, so.
I think, you know, I, I think there's a lot of, there's something to be said for perception, and, you know, we all know, it's no surprise, years ago, we were the bar town, and I'll be the first one to say, with all due respect to our bars, I'd rather have restaurants. And there is that perception, that Whiskey Hill perception, that we've all worked so hard to get rid of, and we've come a long way, and it's just, that perception is long gone. And I think when, you know, to your point, when you, you know, you're getting on the train, and it's dark, and you see people filing into a bar, or, you know, running into the Jewel to buy a six-pack, it's a little unsettling, you know, but, but as you, you know, again, you make a good point. They might be third shift people that, they're just getting off work.
I think one of the issues with the smoking ban, too, also, it brought everybody out in front, so it's more apparent, and maybe doesn't look as, as-
Yeah.
-good as we would like it to look for, trying to bring new families into the community, or anybody going on the train, sits there and sees the bars open at times. I think that's kind of hurt us a little bit. And I think in the alleys, in the afternoons and evenings, when there, people are standing outside, it's uncomfortable for people to walk through there. And I don't know if that's because of it's overcrowding, or they're going out there to smoke, or whatever it is, but there's comments about that, too. So maybe that's something that the owner can address, and so we get a win situation for everybody.
I don't know what time, like Potbelly and DJ's and-
DJ's, I checked, I talked to Tracy earlier this week.
Some of our other spots even open.
DJ's does not open until 10:00 or 11:00. I checked with Tracy to see if this was an effect, or, and Mr. Carlson can answer, but I know for the Potbelly, I'm not sure if they open later, or if they open at 6:00. I had heard that they open, maybe open later, like 8:00 or so, but I wasn't able to confirm that.
Any other comments from board members, before we have the gentleman get up and speak from the Uptown?
I have, I have a question. Did you, is this also affecting, do we have anything for people purchasing liquor, like at the Jewel, or anything at Jewel Osco? Is this the same time effect?
Well, that's, that's another-
That, that's a whole different, I mean, okay.
Well, that's part, that's part of it, that's another point that we can, can discuss, whether we want them selling alcohol at the Jewel at 6:00 in the morning, or whether you want them to start at, at 9:00.
Well, because I'm, I'm just thinking that when I shop late, like at the Jewel down by 83, I believe they have to stop selling liquor at midnight, because I remember, you know, if I'm, they're late, there's people trying to rush up and get to the cash register before midnight, so it would ring up, and I guess after midnight, they'll have trouble ringing it up on the cash registers, but that's what I was wanting, so I don't know how Clerton Hills was with any of their liquor establishments, if they have any.
In doing the survey, there again, different towns had different licensed class. If your packaged goods sales may stop at midnight, they may not start till 9:00 in the morning, or may allow them to 6:00 in the morning, so I believe that would be open for discussion for the board to decide, did you want to set times by licensed class? Other towns do do it, some don't. The way our ordinance is right now, it's all liquors, starting at 6:00 in the morning until 1:00 on weekdays. On Saturday morning and Sunday morning, it's till 2:00 a.m. So whether you go to Jewel, if Jewel was open 24 hours and sell liquor until 2:00 in the morning, they could.
What about packaged liquors? Does the Uptown-
Yes.
Have the license to also sell-
Yes.
Packaged?
Yes, yes, he has both.
So if you want to go in there and have a couple of beers, you can also buy a six-pack to take home with you. And I think that's, are there any others that do that? To my knowledge, there, there are not.
I don't believe the Potbelly does. I think the Potbelly is just for consumption on premises only.
He does carry out.
He does, okay. And then the other one would be your convenience store, just packaged, because he's out for consumption on the property.
Any other comments?
Am I, am I missing Friday on here, or is somehow it's, is it blended in?
Saturday morning, Friday is Friday morning, it's, it's kind of hard, because you're going pass on to the next time. When I put here 2:00 on Saturday, it's 2:00 Saturday morning, 2:00 Sunday morning, licenses until Saturday night. Saturday night into Sunday morning, Friday night into Saturday morning. That's where it gets a little bit confusing when you read it.
Yeah, it, it was, I'm trying to figure out what happened Friday.
But that's the way that I set out, and with the other villages, the same way.
I just thought maybe Friday was dry day.
No.
No liquor. Fred, do we have any, like, ballpark on if we affected, like, packaged liquor sales and open bar sales and all that, how much tax revenue we lose?
I, I do not at this time, trustee. I would think that the establishment owners might be able to give us a more accurate estimate of what that dollar amount might be. I, I don't know what kind of volume they do between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments? If the, assume you're the, the owner of the Uptown?
My name is Bill Carlson from the Uptown Cavern. You know, and I found it very unsettling yesterday when I heard this, because I don't know what I did wrong. I feel like I'm being picked on. I've been opening up in the morning for about the last two years, a couple of days a week. I was there at 5:00 this morning. Around 6:30, I had three firemen come in, I had four people from Pepperidge Farm come in. All before 8:00, I'd say, I had 12 night shift people come in. And you're just cutting into my business, and this time of the, the way the economy is, it's going to hurt me. And I don't understand why. I don't think I've ever had a police call between 6:00 and 9:00 a.m., and I've been there 20 years, you know, I just don't understand it. You know, I feel like, you know, if somebody had a problem, I wish they would address me, or my partner, one of my bartenders, you know, I'd take care of it. We just recently hired somebody to work at night, to be kind of like a security bouncer, ID checker, to make, you know, canvass the building, you know, make sure no one's out there, no problems. there, no problems, you know, and I just feel like I'm being picked on, you know. And Tom can look it up, you know. If there's any police calls, I'd sure like to know about them, because I, not from my establishment, you know. That's all I have to say. Do you have any questions for me?
How much of your business is carryout?
What percentage? I'd say very small, you know, not, nothing like Jewel. I took part in the program for the ID check, you know, I went to those meetings, I have them come in, I put the stickers up, but not a great deal of carryout business.
Can I ask you why you felt it was necessary to hire somebody at nighttime?
Our business picked up. We've got some people living next door to us in the apartments that are younger, and they're causing problems at night. We're getting blamed for their problems. So we thought it would be, you know, our best interest.
Rather than make a decision.
Because we're getting blamed, I feel, for things that we don't have any part of, you know. There's a lot of kids next door, and they're lighting firecrackers off on the Fourth of July and stuff in the parking lot behind, you know, who's going to get blamed? We do. And anything that goes wrong, I've been down in that alley, I seem like I get blamed for it, you know, and I, and it's not justified in my mind. Like I said, if there's a problem, like somebody must have complained for you to do this. You wouldn't just come out, you know, wake up one morning and go, I want to change the hours of operation, and it's only basically affecting me. So, like I said, I mean, if we're having problems in the morning, and there would be, you know, a lot of police and fights and all that kind of stuff, I can understand that. There's no problem. Like I said, I got up at quarter to four this morning, I was there before 5:00. Cleaned up, opened up my business like anybody else that has a business, and I'm here trying to defend myself right now. And I'm going to be there tomorrow morning. You know, and I don't understand why. I really don't. I'd love questions from you, how you feel about it, you know, because Hinsdale doesn't do it, or Downers doesn't do it. Is that the reason? I know Lyle, one bar opens at 7:00, I know a bartender that works there.
What about the people that are hanging around in the alley? I guess there's.
I think there's kids next door that are hanging around outside and congregating and sitting on the little window wall over there. My customers go out in back, have a cigarette, because I try to encourage them to go out in back, because I don't think it looks that good for the commuters, so I try to encourage that.
Okay.
So, yeah, there'll be people out there having a cigarette that can't smoke inside, and they go back in.
Well, we appreciate you getting them out of the front.
Sure, I mean, I try to, you know, let them know, I prefer if they're going to have a cigarette, I don't smoke, but to smoke in the back.
And of course, they're not carrying any alcohol out behind them while they're having a cigarette either.
That was another reason why, you know, we got a lot of, you know, bartenders can't be watching all over. You know, we had a train crawl come in there on Saturday evening, I walked in there, and I just stayed in back for an hour and a half while they were there before they got on the train again, because they were drinking on the train, and they were drunk, and they were walking outside with beers. And I would just tell them they had to go back inside. So I policed it myself, you know, it's like part of the business, but I don't think there's a lot of complaints about that. Do you get any complaints about that, Tom?
Yes.
You know, or drinking outside? Drinking outside and back?
Out back when we went to the cigarette.
Yeah, I really, really frown on that, and the customers know that. The regulars, police, other people tell them not to do that.
Well, I would guess that most of your customers are pretty regular.
Yes.
So they probably know your drill and what you expect.
Yeah, and they would enforce it with somebody that's not a regular, you know.
Exactly.
Sure.
Exactly.
No, I mean, I have a lot of night shift people that come in, and I've worked very hard to get those night shift people to come in.
Even the other night, when trustee Seneca and clerk Shimskey and I, we went on a reconnaissance mission back in the alley to view the lighting and the, you know, we sent Ginny out as a decoy to see if we could get anyone to hassle her, and it didn't work. Your, your customers, we were, you know, well, I at least was acting like a complete buffoon, and they just ignored us. They were very, they were very respectful, they went out for their cigarette, just, you know, kind of looked at us appropriately, like we were not.
Like one of those people.
But, you know, because we were, we were trying to see if there was, for the benefit of people with this parking issue, if anybody back there, and we were back there at 11:30 at night, felt threatened back there. Certainly not by your patrons, they were, you know, they knew we were there, but nobody, you know, they didn't even make the snide comments they could have based on our behavior. So.
But, you know, like, I've been tending bar in Westmont for over 30 years, 34 years I've been tending bar in Westmont, you know, and as I've grown older, so has my crowd, for the most part, you know, I've got a following.
Right.
People come up to see me, I know a lot of people, you know, and like I said, you know, what did I do wrong?
Well, they were out there for two reasons.
I'm trying to maintain a business, you know, it's, you're going to like take maybe 10% of my business away by changing the hours of operation. In this economic times, you know, that really hurts. It really hurts me. I'll probably have to, you know, get rid of somebody. You know, I can't afford that. I don't think anyone that owns a business wants to lose 10% of their business because somebody doesn't like the fact that somebody's drinking at 7:00 in the morning. You know, I just don't think that's fair.
What time do the night shift people usually come in? I mean, I'm not familiar with the coming.
My night shift people?
Nine o'clock, I thought, was, when I even read this, I thought, okay, as much as I'd like to discourage the drinking, I understand that's what people do. So.
We were between 6:30 and 8:00, depends. I mean, I got people that work at Jewel that come in, that work the night shift, people that work at Good Samaritan Hospital, people that work at Downers Grove Police Department, people that work at.
I mean, you know, I'm, I'm looking at.
Pepperidge Farm.
The list here, and it varies, you got 6:00, you got 8:00, you got 7:00, you got 11:00. You know, I'm thinking, okay, maybe, maybe 7:00 if there was, and how much would that impact? And I, and I think we're talking.
Depends on what day of the week it is.
We should be talking about what's happening at night to decide the morning. I mean, that's, that's two different issues. I mean, if.
I mean, are you worried about walking down the alley at 6:30 in the morning? I've got all these women flying through that alley at 6:30 in the morning to go work out. It's not my customers.
Thank you.
You know, I mean, I've taken the garbage out, afraid I'm going to get run over.
Would 7:00 be?
Might just more of a hardship. I mean, anybody that's going to lose an hour's worth of business.
You have to sleep in longer though.
Pardon me?
You have to sleep in.
Yeah, okay, I'll sleep, I'll get up at 4:30 instead.
It, it not only affects you, not just singling out you, we're talking about packaged liquors as well, for the Jewel and other establishments that serve.
I think Jewel or anybody else will be coming in here and telling you that, I'm sure on a weekend, on a bear weekend, Sunday, that they do a tremendous amount of business, you know.
And then, and that's why, that's why I'm bringing it up for discussion. I'm not trying to single you out.
Well, I think I am, because I'm the only one that opens up.
I'm talking about, it's something, it's something that probably hasn't been discussed for 30 years in terms of hours of liquor serving.
Well, no, because Mayor Eddington, I'm sorry, Mayor Eddington changed it on Sunday because he thought there was more cars parked at the bars than at church, and that's exactly what he said.
If I can interject here.
Okay.
When I was first appointed to this board, Mayor Eddington, if you're listening, Mayor, said, oh, the meetings go till 9:00 or 8:30, don't worry, they're not very long, because I was concerned about my school nights and stuff like that, like kids. And he goes, oh, they don't go very long. And the first item on the agenda was changing the hours of the liquor license to sell liquor until noon. It was noon on Sundays, what was proposed.
Right, correct.
If you recall. And we were here, that's where I got the Forsley nights, because we were here till midnight discussing that, if you recall. And, and I think the compromise was down to 9:00, so, you know.
But I mean, Downers Grove went to 9:00.
What's that?
Downers Grove went from noon to 9:00, because their reasoning was, they had to compete with the other towns.
Mm-hmm.
They were losing so much money. Jewel was in there complaining, because they were losing so much money, because people were going to different Jewels to buy their alcohol on a, you know, a bear game or whatever.
Well, and that being said.
We just had that conversation earlier.
We just had the conversation of saying that, again, I would like to see it at noon, being a, you know, teacher and promoting non-drinking to students and things like that. However, we had a party on a Sunday and went to, I don't know, I don't remember where I went, but we had to buy the liquor for the party, and we couldn't, we couldn't buy it till after a certain time, and didn't even, totally forgot about that. So I could appreciate people that, you know, are partying on Sunday in the sense of graduation party, or, you know, a birthday party, or anything, more in the summertime than in the winter, or a bear's party, or, you know, the tailgating. Yeah, I, I never thought about that.
I get a lot of people that go to, take the train to go to a Cub game or a White Sox game, and they'll come in and get a six pack.
Yeah.
You know, take the train, go down there, you spend $8 for a beer at a ballgame, and you can buy a six pack of beer for $6. What are you going to do, you know? And you'll see them all on their little Cub outfit, standing on the tracks, and that's business to me. They'll come in and have a drink before they get on the train. It's great, you know.
Other comments? Unless there are any comments from the, anyone in the audience or any of the other board members, I would, I would like to make a request on Monday to have this item postponed until the next agenda, so that more people, whether they be residents or businesses, can hear this program this evening and come in and voice their concerns, as they do with every other issue that's brought before this board. And if we want to change the hours, fine, if we want to keep, keep it the same way that it is where people can start drinking at 6:00 in the morning, so, so be it. But I want the item considered, and I want to get the opinions of, of everybody in the community as to what our direction is on this, on this item. Any other questions?
No, just one more comment. I mean, you know, for the guy that gets off, for the neurosurgeon that gets off at 6:00 in the morning.
I have, I have emergency room doctors that come in.
And he's on his way home, you know, he may not want to stop and have one with people. He may want to go to the Jewel and pick up a six pack and go home and have one. So it, it impacts far more businesses than, than just the Uptown. So it is something we really have to think about, and the impact, you, you raised the impact of sales tax and revenue and things like that, so I think we have a lot to consider, and I, I like the mayor's idea of getting even more input from other business owners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Pumpkin Harvest Festival traffic plan. Board to consider closing Quincy Street between Lincoln Street and Grant Street and redirect traffic on Lincoln, Lincoln Street to allow for the Pumpkin Festival, Harvest Festival on October 22nd through October 25th.
Another great event.
This, I think, was also included in a previous request for the use of the Quincy lot. We just wanted to ensure that the traffic flow plan is in place. Street department, Jim Wright from the street department, every year, was out with signage as we have the direct traffic away from the area.
And Tom, I, I may have lost touch with some of the email correspondence, but I know we had looked at whether this, these approvals were made a month ago when this item was up, and I thought the answer was yes.
I thought they were as well. I thought this was going to be pulled from the agenda, to be honest with you.
Okay, it was already published, so it was on the agenda, so in looking at the ordinance that was passed a month ago, these approvals were already made, so this can be pulled from the agenda.
Okay.